Good evening and welcome to the Town of Garner Town Council Work Session for April 29th, 2025. Glad to have you here this evening. Apologize for the two or three minute delay. We had a technological issue. We want to make sure that all of our friends at home get to watch us live or later, their choice. Speed through the commercials like you do on Fast Forward at home. The work sessions are a little less formal than than some others, but we have some work to get done tonight. The good news is there are many interesting presentations, a lot of discussions, but no hard decisions to make tonight. That takes the pressure off of us. But thank you for being with us tonight. Let's start out by asking our Deputy Town Clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Gepkin?
Here.
Mayor President Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Behrger?
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
He's not here. He has asked for an excused absence. And I would ask our council members, is there a motion to make this an excused absence?
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Mr. Vance, seconded by Mr. Singleton, all in favor of making this an excused absence. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none, Mr. Matthews is officially excused. He's on vacation. I'm sure he appreciates it. I'm sure he's watching us live right now. Our next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda.
I know, that was a joke. We said when you were out on vacation, you said you're...
I watched it the next morning and fast forwarded through the commercials, if you know what I mean.
That's a good way to do it.
So we do have to adopt the agenda. I believe all of our council members have had a chance to take a look at it, not too complicated. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. Behrger, seconded by Mr. Singleton. All in favor of adopting the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by nay. Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And now into the good stuff. And we have our first presenter coming to the podium over there to talk about the town rebranding program. There's a lot to it. A lot of time has been spent, a lot of energy has been spent, but it's only been in the last two workdays, just to tell you where we are in the process, it's only been in the last two workdays, yesterday and Friday, that town council got a sneak preview of some of the graphics, some of the, some of the first drafts of the product, you might say. The process has been very intensive, lots of input, town surveys, citizen involvement, department involvement, employee involvement. A great job has been done on the process, and this is one of the first go public, go live, that was for a lot more conversation, a lot more input, and we won't settle for anything less than great on this. And with that, I'm going to pass the microphone over to our Town Manager, Jody Miller, who will introduce some other members of the team, work on this, and kind of tell us where we are.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening to provide you an update on the town's rebranding project. With me this evening are our friends from Graphic House, Steve and Stacy Colas. They have been our partners and our designers. I would even call them our artists who've been working with this, with us on this project. So tonight is one of many conversations we're going to have with council in terms of rebranding. We're going to provide you an update about the work we've done today as far as information gathering, engagement, and then show you some concepts, some artistic concepts that Steve and Stacy will review with you, and then really talk about what next steps are going to look like. As the mayor mentioned, there's been a lot of staff work, working with our friends at Graphic House over the last couple of months. Now it's time to start sharing ideas, approaches, thinking, getting feedback and comments. And as, as the mayor mentioned, this is sort of the first conversation with council on this, and we anticipate more moving forward. So first, before we sort of dive into the work we've done today, I think it's important that we all have a basic understanding and use the same definition for branding. And branding really focuses on a unique cohesive identity. It creates a specific impression in people's minds. It helps people recognize and remember your organization, and it helps us stand out from our competitors. So it's far more than just a logo. And Garner's brand has evolved over time. Our identity has evolved, and you'll see the, on the screen before you, to, to the left is the Garner Great Place to Be. And that was developed in the early 2000s. The town borrowed that tagline and logo from a local real estate marketing campaign. It also is a nod to Garner Magnet's high school team colors as well with the blue and yellow. And the town kind of gradually adopted this as our logo and our tagline. Since early 2000s, we have evolved, and what we found is that particular logo is sometimes hard to use in different situations. And so what has happened is in order to be able to use a logo in printed materials, in lapel pins, in reports, we've had other logos and designs that have kind of evolved. And what you see before you is several of the, the brands that have kind of evolved or logos that have evolved. Everything from a use for one of our departments, our Economic Development Department, to one of our facilities, the GPAC facility, to our partners in downtown Garner, working with DGA, and then the G with a Garner Forward Plan. It loosely ties the town colors of that blue and that yellow in, but what we found is there's really no sort of central oversight or theme that goes along with these varied approaches to our logo. So moving forward to today, we are, have leveraged the Garner Forward brand. We started using this as sort of a next step in our evolution. It's created a modern and simple imagery for the town. It transitions away from the school-specific colors, but still is within that blue family. And we've, we've been using it over the last year or so, sort of testing the concept. So why now? Why now is the time to be doing this work and having these important conversations? We sort of have three areas of why now. First, that really sort of made us think that this would be the appropriate time is the work that the town has done to consolidate Garner Fire Rescue Department in with the town as of next fiscal year. Part of our agreement with them talks about rebranding them to make sure that they are sort of fit under the town umbrella. So the question became, well, if we're going to look at rebranding one department, maybe it's time for us to look at the overall town brand. Another reason why we're looking at this now is the town's focus over the past eight or nine months on public art. As I mentioned, our friends at Graphics House, they've prepared some concepts for us to, to react to and give feedback on, but what they've done is much more than graphic design. It's about creating a piece of public art for our town. And then finally, community feedback, and I'm going to talk about this in a little bit more detail in just a moment. We got a lot of feedback from our residents, and that was a really important part of the work we've done over the last couple of months, is to get feedback early in the process from our residents and our staff on our current brand and logo. As you recall, we also conducted the National Community Survey last spring, and some of the information from that, that we gleaned, spoke to a changing community dynamic, looking at values, assets, and opportunities for improvement. Conversations with the town staff and residents have agreed that it's now time to modernize the Town of Garner's look. Branding refresh also supports, as I mentioned, the fire merger. That work is happening in alignment with, with the discussions we're having as an overall town. And then one of the really cool things, I think, as, as part of this project, is that we are working with a local design company that supports the town's public art initiatives in our partnership with Graphics House. All right. So an important part of this work to date has been the engagement work, and our, our partners at Graphics House has been really involved with us in, in doing this work. There's two main components of this engagement work that we've participated in to date. One was doing some direct outreach at some of the activities and events that the town hosts. We did an event with our employees in which our friends from Graphics House joined us and got feedback and input from our employees. They attended our St. Patrick's Day event at White Deer Park to really talk with residents, get feedback, get ideas. And then we also launched a survey, an online survey. And so on that survey, we asked three questions. What attracts people to Garner? What symbols and imagery are associated with Garner? And what would they change about the current logo? We had almost 1,400 responses to that survey, which I was just blown away by the level of interest. And, and just the, I would even say the buzz that it created. People got excited about the possibility of talking about this and what a future vision for our logo and brand would be. And there's been a lot of interest and energy around this. Even today, I get asked all the time where we are in the process, what's the next step in the process. So it's created a lot of buzz, and I would say a lot of positive buzz. So when you look at the survey results of those almost 1,400 responses, here's one of the primary takeaways that we've been looking at. Residents want to see a modern, bold branding identity that represents Garner's strong community spirit and assets. Looking further into the results, some of the top attractions that were named, things that kept coming up over and over again, in terms of resident feedback was small-town feel, proximity to Raleigh, strong sense of community, our parks and green spaces, and affordability and family-friendly. And some of the feedback that we received that kept coming up over and over again regarding the current brand was that it was somewhat outdated, the design and its fonts. It doesn't represent a changing or a growing community. And there were mixed feelings about the current color scheme. So from this work, the engagement work, we formed a employee work group that's been working on this concept to really help us determine what are our guiding principles for this work, and really what is the story we want to tell. Employees from not only the manager's office, but from Parks and Recreation, we've had members of fire, police, other, other members of our, our staff, our communications team have been part of this work group to really help us sort through this and get us to a place where we're able to provide information to you this evening about process and next steps. So through that work, here are some of the guiding principles we've been using in our discussions and our work with our friends at Graphics House in order to sort of start talking about, well, what, what does a tagline looks like? What are, what are some concepts? What are some images? And so the first guiding principle is wanting to, to proactively define Garner's identity and future, wanting to be very proactive about that. The opposite of that is no longer reacting or letting others define us. And that's a, that's a big piece of branding work. It's really creating your own identity and, and aspirations for the future and not letting others do that for you. Ready for a fresh, modern look that matches Garner's energy and potential. And one of the principles that we've used is we want to make sure that we represent a modern and professional town government. So it really comes down to what is the story we want to tell. And here, and here's the, the work that we've, we've come to at this point as a way to engage you in conversation this evening. One of the things we've learned is that something can, something great grow from something small. We hear about the small-town charm and feel that people like, and we see that great things can grow and have grown here in the Town of Garner. We're proud of our small-town history. The people choosing Garner are our greatest assets. And our future as a vibrant and growing municipality in Wake County is on the horizon. So when we talk about what is the story, what is that identity that we want, these are some of the guiding principles. So we want our new brand to create a feeling or quality that causes excitement, to set off a burst of energy or activity. So when we talked about this, the word that came to mind was spark. Feeling or quality that causes excitement, to set off a burst of, of energy or activity. So we want to spark greatness. Spark business, spark create, recreation, spark investment, spark innovation, spark community, as we think about the future and aspirations of, of our community. I'm going to now invite my friends from Graphics House to come over and then sort of walk you through their creative process to date, based on all the information I've shared this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody. I haven't done bifocals yet, sorry. Council, Mayor Gepkin, thank you all for having us. While many of you know us, we'd like to take a moment to introduce ourselves. We are Steve and Stacy Colas of Graphics House Design Studio. We've been in business for over 20 years, and 17 of them have been on our amazing Main Street in downtown Garner. For those 20 years, we have been creating logo designs and brandings for big and small businesses alike, creating bold logos that are, that are simplistic, original, and effective. Our goal here is to make Garner look good, get noticed, and show our hometown identity proudly. For this logo design that you see, thank you, Jody. For this logo design, we would like to pay homage to our history while focusing on our future, that something great can grow from something small. We created the G in multiple pieces coming together to retain the G we know and love while showing that Garner is a community of people who come together in unity, something that was a main theme in the hundreds of responses that we have heard. We keep a lot of open space in the logo to keep it from being tight and congested. People come to Garner to feel like they can breathe because of our natural spaces, our open spaces. We want to give the logo room to breathe and to show us that. For the colors, we used a deep blue to nod to the Garner's history and tradition of blue. While showing respect to our foundation, we wanted to point to our future as a vibrant and growing municipality with its updated blue that is rich in color and heritage. We used orange to evoke a feeling of warmth, connection, and enthusiasm, all the things people feel in Garner when they come together, while keeping a clean, bold look. Finally, we used gray at the bottom to show stability, reliability, and timeliness. For our tagline, we retained great because Garner is great. Garner is a place that sparks community, joy, business curiosity, and friendship. Garner sparks greatness. And where there's a spark, people come together to watch it grow. May we... Thank you. Again, only got on one set of glasses. Let's see here. For this logo design, we focused on many of the same themes, paying respect to our history and what makes Garner special while focusing on our future. In this design, we started with a foundation to show that everything great needs a solid foundation. From this foundation, we are lifting and aiming upwards as a community. The defined lines show our growth and development, with the two colors making up the G to show all types of people coming together. Every spark starts small and grows upward, just like our beloved town. Both logos have three components, an icon, a name, and a tagline. They can be used together or separately, giving the town the ability to show our identity proudly in every way, from letterheads, vehicles, and uniforms, to signage, website, and promotions for our wonderful town events. Please. Here is some images of other of the municipalities in Wake County, and some of their logo and illustration designs. We no longer want to let others define us. Each of these logos tell a story, but none of them tell ours. That, we are proud of our small-town history, that the people choosing Garner are our greatest assets, and that our future as a vibrant and growing municipality in Wake County is on the horizon. How do the brand concept speak to the town's vision for the future? Again, going back to nodding to our history and what we have been, the blue and the yellow, keeping the blue, and then focusing on the aiming upwards and the new people that are moving to our community and the new concepts and aspects. As Jody mentioned, not only did we have 1,500 people write in the survey, I literally spoke to hundreds of people at town events, and people just called me. Once they realized that we were doing the rebranding for the town, they called just to tell me their thoughts and their feedback. We got a ton of information, and it was wonderful. And we want to show that we are all, everyone wants to talk about coming together and community and just what it looks like next. And that's what we tried to portray. So here we've got different concepts. Again, this is just showing you the different ideas. These are the two logos that we had showed you previously. The first on the right being the, the more open G. You have some concepts from the very top right of just, again, the bottom gray, moving forward, pulling us up to our next, to our next adventure here in Garner. The second to the right, it can be two triangles coming together. Even though we are a part of the triangle, we do not want to identify ourselves as simply part of the triangle. But this does show that we are and can be part of a municipality community. And then the bottom, just a solid gray. Perfect, thank you. Yeah, that's one. So here we are talking about the brand variations. When I was talking about that there is an icon, a name, and a tagline. When you're doing marketing and branding, sometimes if there's our, as our logo is now, as Jody was saying, it's all clumped together, our logo and our tagline. When you create a logo that you can pull it apart, you can use it on multiple things in different ways, whether it be for the shirts, for our vehicles. This is just showing you how strong the logo shows just with the G. And then, of course, to the bottom right with some of our, you know, sub-branding of the departments.
And then this, this way it wouldn't change the integrity of the logo, having seven different logos representing the town. We, this, this whole idea came about was trying to keep it all the same throughout the town, being able to change out some of the subtitles there and still keeping the integrity of the brand.
Right. Thank you, Stacy and Steve, for your overview of your, your work to date and your artistry. So like, we talked about this being, starting the conversation with council, and, and that's what we want to do this evening. Next steps for this process looks at taking all the information, all the comments, all the questions that we receive from council this evening, taking them back to the employee work group and working with Steve and Stacy on continued refinements and improvements to this work, with the target of bringing back some refined concepts in the June-July timeframe for further discussion and feedback from council. We're targeting August to be sort of the launch of the new brand. If you remember, we're also doing this in alignment with the fire rebranding as well. So the idea is that the work that we do from the town perspective would then be able to be incorporated into the fire brand as well. So that, that's all we have to present this evening. Myself and Stacy and Steve are here to, to answer any questions. I want to acknowledge Rick Mercer, Mari Howe, John Hodges, and Matt Poole, who's sort of been on the, on the leadership group doing this work and helping navigate it. I've appreciated their attention to detail and their energy and enthusiasm to date. So with that, Mayor, any questions or comments for council?
Thank you. First of all, thanks to all of the work group who's diligently working on this for months and months. A lot of feedback, a lot of input, trying to pull all that together. Stacy didn't use an analogy, but she mentioned it to me, and I'm going to say it. She said if you get 40,000 people in a room and say, now we're going to order one dinner, that's going to suit everybody. How's that going to work out? There's going to be a lot of feedback. There's going to be a lot of different opinions, et cetera, et cetera. And that's part of what, what this is, too. Keep in mind, too, that what we're talking about tonight is part of a process. We're not here to make decisions. We're not going to do like a God-Doctor, which, when he says, is, which is better, A or B, B or C? No, no, it's not that. We're, we're not here to, to lock in or make a decision. We're here to launch an input process that will take us a month or two. And I know how open the whole work group has been to suggestions. So just keep in mind, part of a process. And before we start with town questions, one other piece of information I might call on Assistant Town Manager Poole. He has extensive background in, in the fire, fire and rescue. And one of the, one of the motivators here was that as we worked to have a fire department instead of a fire corporation, to co-brand that. And you had a little feedback in some of our small group discussions about how the firefighters are looking at this and how they're having ideas to maybe integrating. Is, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? Did we come up with, with the fire brand and then the town brand, the town brand? It's been a cohesive work, step by step. There's not a simple answer, but you had some interesting observations of how this was progressing.
Yes, sir. Originally, when the merger was going to occur, we, we wanted to rebrand the, the fire department to become part of the town. We wanted to change the culture, change the organization, and, and then the concept of rebranding. The town came in parallel with that. The intention of the fire department was to be, to rebrand their logo prior to July 1. So when they became part of the town, their uniforms would reflect the new logo, their new department. It was to, to create that sense of, of home here. But they have a, the fire department has a branding committee that has worked, several of us represent the town on that committee as well. They've gone with, with Graphics House through several renditions of a fire department logo. At this point, the fire department is in agreement to, or prefers one of those two logos that you saw. They're going back to what we would call a Maltese cross. It's an older version of the fire service. And so in the center of that, one of these logos, the fire department is very interested in. We've asked them to, to put their rebranding on hold till we receive feedback from council and take this process further. But to, to look at this imagery, the, the three on the right, the fire department, it fit what they were trying to do to change. So not saying that that has a, a large bearing on, on the whole overall process, but we did want, part of branding is that all of our departments look the same, right? We're trying to be unified. And so the timing of the fire merger really put some extensive pressure on this side of the house to, to try to get all this done at the same time. And so that's where we're at. The fire, the fire branding is essentially waiting on response from the town to what we're going to do. But they, the last meeting, they, they like this logo incorporated into their new logo.
Excellent. Excellent. Thanks for the work you're doing over there. It does work hand in hand. That being said, well, I know there's lots of questions, lots of input, and we'll probably run through the, the council role here a couple of times, asking a question each on the first pass, then we'll come back as we go. And we'll start with Mayor Pro-Tim Vance down there. Questions, comments for any of the folks who have been working on this?
First, I would just say, just a response, the, the process has been comprehensive and intense with a lot of information provided and having to be... and having to be reviewed and incorporated to develop this proposed logo as we see it now. So I want to say thank you for the hard work that's gone into it behind the scenes to bring this forth. I'm quite sure there were some very interesting conversations going back and forth to reach this point where we are and to incorporate what we're trying to do with the future merger as well. Very, very important process. And I really don't have anything to say at this point relative to what has been presented. I will listen to what the council members have to say. But again, the process has been one, I believe, has been very comprehensive and inclusive and interpreting what everyone has tried to put in to a logo which captures the essence of what we're about is not an easy task to do. Just appreciate the work that's going forward at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dallinger?
Yes, thank you for coming in, presenting. I had to write things down, so I don't ramble. So, you know, a lot of people come into the council chamber and they're pitching some project or some development. And they don't live here. They aren't going to live here. They don't care about here. They want to get in and get out without regard to whether or not what they're leaving behind is good for Garner or not when they're done. That's not you guys. You guys have been around a long time, and I appreciate both of you. But the first swing is a miss. When I read through the survey results, there are thirteen hundred, and you could read for hours. There's a really large chasm between what I read and the survey results with regards to nature and parks and these types of things and what I'm seeing, what the imagery that it conjures in your head when you're reading that feedback and seeing this. This, to me, reads a little more industrial, and it just, there's a missing gap. There's a gap there. So I'm glad that here at some level that we're closer to the beginning of this process than the end of the process. And I hope that council can have sooner rather than later more input and involvement before it's coming back to us. Because I guess ultimately, we're the decision-makers, and it'd be helpful probably for everyone if we're there in some capacity or the other. Aside from that feedback on, you know, needing to continue to iterate, I do have some general concerns on the process piece of if council, if we're rebranding the town, and there has been this emphasis on the fire rebranding, which is a sub-department future of the town, it seemed like that cart was a little before the horse in terms of priority and why council wasn't involved in the fire rebranding as well. It seems backwards to have a lower design, a logo designed for a department be the driving force behind our decision as we try to rebrand the town. I understand the time constraints, and manager Poole spoke to that. And I'm hoping that we don't use a, have a time constraint accelerate what should be a deliberative, thoughtful process that also involves the public. And I'll pass now because I think there is probably more conversation about what the public engagement piece will be going forward. We've gotten the feedback going, looking backwards, how are we going to engage the public going forwards? I know you've got too many cooks in the kitchen, but you've got to have the right ingredients, right? So those are my comments right now.
Thank you. Very insightful. Ms. Behringer?
Mayor, may I just provide a point of clarification? I just want to make sure that it's clear to the council and to our community. The rebranding for the fire department came in terms of our negotiations and discussions with the merger. What came from that was then an opportunity to say, is it also a good opportunity to look at the town's rebranding? And so although they're happening in parallel, the fire department rebranding is not driving this work. We're very mindful about the impact of the work we're doing in terms of the town rebranding, its impact on the entire community, on the entire organization. And it's actually been something that the fire department in their work, they've realized that, too, that working together, we get to a better place where we're all, you know, like and support the new brand and logo. And that's actually why they've decided to kind of pause their timeline to make sure that we put the time and the energy and the emphasis on the town branding first. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Good point. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, I will. Thank you to Steve and Stacy for this work. I first mentioned that the town needed a brand probably at least fifteen years ago. And so it took a while for that seed to take root and start growing. And I find myself now looking at this and reflecting on my thoughts over the years about what our town is and what our citizens want to be known for. And as I read this material and listened to your explanation, I'm thinking that I need to think about this a lot and read it over and over again to understand everything that you've captured here. And so I appreciate this hard work. I know that this logo looks completely different than anything we've ever seen before. But we are becoming completely different than what we've had. We have a rich, rich history that we want to build on, and we want to be sure that our logo going forward reflects that while it also points to the future. So thank you for your work and for giving us the time to think about it and reflect on it and decide where we want to go.
Thank you very much. Mr. Singleton?
And I repeat, I thank y'all for your work, what y'all done and the time that you committed. And I read the survey, and we got the long survey. We didn't get to three questions. We got like seven, eight questions. We read last night, and they were interesting, to say the least. As mentioned, there's no rush to do this. We shouldn't be looking at an August timeline if it's months from now. That's what counts, is getting it right. As my daddy says, you don't have time to do it right, but you always got time to do it over. And I'll start there because it's just me and none of this. It's good to me. Sorry. The colors, sorry. It looks like, we showed the thirteen other towns, it looks like y'all looked at that and said, let's see how we can do something completely different than everyone else. And that may be fine, but we need to reflect what Garner is. I read the comments. I read nature and green and parks and kids and the water tower and the caboose and the depot and historic downtown and families and my hometown. I don't see this, I'm sorry, with the corporate G. That looks like the Enron E. I'm sorry. I hate to be that blunt about it, but that's what it looked like, the Enron E, because it's the angle and everything. The, you know, the spark greatness. I questioned when I met with staff. I even pulled a definition out of the phone about that. You know, that's maybe a good tagline for a college or a university or a high school, but I just don't think that should be yet because depending on how you read it, you can think, well, we don't have anything great here. We ought to spark some. Or some would say, well, we're going to expand upon it. Well, if you're going to spark it, but you've already got it, you're going to expand upon it. So it depends on everyone's interpretation, but spark greatness sounds like a tagline for an education group. I know the council wasn't involved until we got here. We should have been involved. We could have been a filter. But the, I just, I'm sorry. I don't care for any other than we need to start fresh. Again, I read the comments, and I kept looking at this. And my wife and son read the comments last night, and they kept asking me the same questions. What do the comments have to do with this? I said, I really have a hard time seeing that, too. So I just, we need to start fresh. And basing it off the comments, because half the comments said, do you want to change it? Half of them said, no, they don't care, or the font was out of line, or the colors were bad. I mean, you kept going through there. Half of them said, no, change. Then you find the ones that had changed, and there were some that were ridiculous, as we know. The funniest one to me, though, was the deer wearing the bow tie and the top hat. That was a really good one. I liked that one.
Sketch, but it just didn't translate.
Yeah. That was a good one. I had to read that. I laughed at that one. And there were some ugly ones, too. You know, you read it. So anyway, I just think we need to start fresh. I just really don't care for anything that's been presented.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. You've been here a long time. You've seen a lot of stuff, and you have lived through many different rebrandings. There's a lot to it. Before we come around with another round of questions or comments, I'll give a little feedback from the team that's been working on it, if you'd like to make any other comments. At this point, we'll run back around.
Oh, absolutely. So when we read all of the surveys, we wanted to give Garner a true piece of art. We wanted to give it something that was, and back to totally different. And we did read that there was a ton about parks and nature. But sometimes in logos, you don't have to hit someone over the head with an imagery that is so exact. A lot of times logo is an innuendo, is a thought process. So when we were going through this, we really wanted to show something that, that we wanted to give you a piece of art, a piece of, something that we could use, again, not just as a logo on your shirt, to do, to bring everybody to Garner. And in our meetings that we met, I didn't realize how much Garner has grown, even though we live here. When we met at the, you're calling it the St. Patrick's Day, the Groundhog Festival, I spoke to probably a hundred families that had just moved to the area. And their comments were not what old Garner residents said to me. So we were trying to really give something that was more, it was an accumulation of everybody and everything. So that's where, that's what we were going for.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to add. I just think it was important to kind of share that so we understand each other's perspectives on where we are in process. So thank you, Stacy, for sharing that.
Thank you. And before we come back around for the next round of questions or comments, because I know everybody's thinking as we go through this, I'll make one. And I'm going to quote what Ms. Behringer said at a particular meeting unrelated to this. It was about a development, and some people who were talking about doing a development were confused by all of the crazy direction roads and lack of square layouts like Raleigh and Charleston and different ones with a big plan. And Ms. Behringer really put it in perspective, said Garner was not planned, it was settled, okay? And that was true. It grew a little bit spontaneously. But by the same token, even though we were settled once, we don't, there's no rush on this, and we don't want to settle for anything less than great on this, to paraphrase a couple of you. We were settled, but we're not settled. We're going to keep pushing. Not everybody will be excited about the dinner we ordered for forty thousand people, but we want everybody to at least be fed and some people to think it's great. So with that being said, we'll come back around, start with Mr. Vance again. See, have you had any further thoughts, comments, questions?
Nope, I just reinforced the process that you're going through, and it's an iterative process. And it appears that the comments will be taken back and synthesized and brought back to us at a later date and possibly incorporating the council and the process in some form as you think it through. I really have nothing else really to add.
Thank you, Mr. Dallinger.
Yeah, and I appreciate your explanation, too. And there's like no question of intention or perspective. But again, I just think it kind of misses the mark. I think there's a sort of, Garner's also changing. There's a lot of more younger people and families, and it's not whimsical. You know, there's, I think about what's going to go on trucks and the side of buildings, but also recs, sports, and things like that. And there's a, the color palette isn't playful enough, I think, to cap, flexible enough to capture some of that, too. And I go back to the retreat, and when this was first sort of brought up, Mr. Matthews had the phrase that came to his mind, was welcome home. And I've taken that and talked to people, like, well, we're doing a rebranding at the last meeting. We're doing it. It's like, yeah. This one came in. And when it said, people, they go, oh, and they just kind of relax. Because that's what people feel like about Garner, is coming home. No matter where you've gone in the world or the country, you come back here and you just relax. So I want to put that into the thought process of, you know, we are bedroom community and historically and all that. It kind of always will be that. And so part of it we need to embrace, and some of it we need to do better on restaurants and all that stuff. But I put that out there as, maybe put that in here when you're talking to folks, what do you think about? What are you, and watch the reaction and see the visceral sort of reaction you get. But yeah, it's a process, and I'm welcome to talk with you guys and give you feedback and throw you ideas. I've got lots of ideas. But yeah, so we'll keep chugging at it.
Thank you for your perspective. Thank you.
Ms. Behringer?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Referring back to what the Assistant Town Manager, Matt, what's his last name now? Okay. What he said about the fire department felt that they could use this logo with their logo. That's kind of noteworthy, something we should think about. Because they have some definite ideas and opinions. I know all of our departments do. But they, being able to incorporate that into their model is something to consider. We all have opinions, and we live in a democracy, and we need to be willing to listen to other people's opinions and think about them, work them through, and then understand that my opinion may not be yours and mine might not be the majority, but we all have a chance to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. For the thoughts, questions?
Yes, actually, you've been talking to a lot of people about this, what's been proposed. What was the target demographic?
The target demographic? We've been talking to people about the logo before we actually got chosen for this job. We've discussed this with entrepreneurs. We've discussed it with old Garner, new Garner. It's something that, again, it was a passion project for us anyways. We always thought that we could help. That's what we do. We help brands and businesses look better. That's what our job is, and we really enjoy everything that follows after that. And the enjoyment, the excitement that people have when they get to see it on their shirts and when they get to put it on their hats and wear it on their backs, and they're really proud to go home and say, hey, honey, look what I got, and I got you one, too. It's just, it's just something that's neat. So demographically, we've probably hit every demographic that there is because we really deal with all walks, from new businesses that are in their early twenties to people that are starting things after they have retired. And we discuss town things always because they live here or do business here.
So truly, he's right. Our target demographic was Garner. It was Garner as a whole. It was old Garner, it's new Garner. It's from, you know, it's everybody, which is a hard, hard order to fill. It really is. And I didn't want to use the analogy that Buddy used, but it's true. It's everyone has such an opinion and of what they find, you know, is beautiful. Art is such a subjective thing, and we really tried to come together and listen to everybody. So you said it seems very corporate, or you said it seems very, you know, ball team, and what I heard was youth. So there is a lot of people that wanted, you know, that have more of that energetic feel about our town versus the, and we, trust me, we have the welcome home that feel, too. But when we did it all together, kind of of the newer crowd, and maybe it was just who was talking to me. A lot of the newer crowd really was wanting something that was a little bit more, you know, we're not Garner. And when we moved here, they would give these examples of, we just kind of moved here, and Garner's getting better now. And they really talk about the growth and the change that Garner has had. And that's what we tried to infuse into this, is showing that, you know, we are our old Garner. We are our blue. We also are something different now, you know, different even since we've moved here. It's a different group, you know, it's a different group. And it's changed, and it's exciting and new. So our demographic is truly Garner, and I know that does not answer your question, but it's the truth.
I appreciate the answer. Again, I go back to the G is just, I drive a lot.
You say you drive?
Hundreds of miles a week. I drive a lot with work, windshield time. I pass a lot of vehicles. And when I first saw this, let's make it so I've seen that vehicle on a truck or a trailer, something similar. I haven't found it yet, but that's just, the G is just too corporate. What I worry about is when you focus on younger generation. It's like I tell some of my customers, how come people don't do this and do that? It's because they tap, tap, tap the card. They don't pay cash. And the younger generation looks at the stuff, click, click, click. They're not looking at the details that you put in on the triangle. They don't care about that. They click, click. They don't, they don't, they see it and glance at it and move on. And kind of had to remember that sometime, too, that younger, I've got a thirty-year-old, a twenty-three-year-old, and a twenty-one-year-old. I know firsthand what they do. And I did last night ask the thirty- and twenty-three-year-old their opinion. And so I get back to the click, click, click. They look at it. They don't soak it in. So again, I still, I will stop there. You've heard what I had to say. Thank you for answering the question about the demographic.
Thank you. A lot of good input. I think the key thing to remember here, this is part of a process. We still, we've had a great beginning. A lot of good foundation has been built. We're not here to say yes or no on this, here to continue the dialogue, encourage the dialogue. And I heard one of you say- And what I heard one of you say, uh, I know we're able to talk with you guys, and I know that's true. Not, not just the, the graphics house team, but the, the Garner town team that's invested in this and more talking. And I've never been turned down by any of these people. And I said, could I talk with you a little bit? So I'm going to extend that invitation to, to all the council members. Call anybody on, on this rebranding team, anybody at graphics house, anybody on the council and say, let's talk about it. I don't think anybody's going to say no. That's the input we want. It's, it's a tough road to hoe. We appreciate all you've done. And we're just glad to get something out. It's, it's, it's easy to talk in the generalities. It, it's hard to, to work on the details sometime. It's hard to create. It's easy to critique. I've learned this through the years. So thanks for what you've done. Mr. Vance?
And just to add on to that, I am, uh, I did, not rich enough to collect art, but I do collect prints. And, uh, and understanding when I collect a piece of print, it's, I may see something in that print and somebody else may see something else in that print. And, uh, and just listening to, uh, the former chief of, uh, the fire department speak about how it, it, the, uh, the current proposed logo is incorporating some of their, uh, images of the Montez cross? The Montez cross in there. I don't see it, but Stacy, okay. So by incorporating and looking at that and, and seeing the symbolism, uh, I know that each is going, each of us will have a different view as to how they see this particular piece of art that's being provided to us and will speak to us in different ways. Uh, I just want to say again, thank you so much for pulling us together. And we know that it was, it's not an easy endeavor, but, uh, I just wanted to put that out there and say that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. I think we've been around. I think we, we've opened the doors. We have something to talk about now, something we can critique. Uh, that being said, closing comments, uh, town manager Miller?
Uh, no additional comments. Just want to thank council for your time and attention on this important and I think exciting project for the town. Um, as we've, as we've talked about this evening, a lot of work has gone into where we are today to start having these discussions, start giving feedback and reactions, but there's much more work ahead of us and we look forward to working with council on that.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, graphics house, Steve and Stacy. Great work. We know, we know it is a work of passion for you. Thanks for being here. And almost as interesting and passionate is the budget and capital improvement. Holy cow, that's coming up next. But it's the same way. You ask 40,000 people, what do you want? Uh, what's important to you? You might get 40,000 different answers. Uh, but fortunately we have with us, uh, our budget director, Sarah Warren, who works year round, uh, working on the budget. As soon as we finish the one for the coming fiscal year of July 1st, she and her team, uh, one of whom at least is with us here tonight, Haley, for less. We walk by and chat in the mornings, uh, but they work year round on this budget stuff. So they're not just hustling here in the last month or two to get it to the finish line. It, it's an ongoing project. And with that, I'm going to pass this over to you, Ms. Warren, and tell us about what we have on the capital improvement part of that.
So thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of council. Um, we have been working all year on the budget. What we'll see is that we've started the CIP, um, in the fall. And what we have continued to do over the last couple of years is bring you the recommended CIP prior to the recommended budget. So this is just a preview of what is going to be included in the capital improvement plan for the upcoming fiscal year. Just a quick agenda. Um, David Beck, our finance director is going to go over our debt and give you an update on our borrowing schedule after our bond sale this spring, uh, including a model update. And then I'm going to go through the proposed FY 2630 capital improvement program. Uh, provide you with some work that staff's been working on, new projects, any project changes, and then a future project update. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to David.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, just wanted to do a quick update of our debt model that Davenport prepares for us and maintains for us. So we asked them to go back and give us an update of that after the recent bond sale, uh, so that we had fresh numbers to look at. Just wanted to go through a few highlights of that with you this, this evening. These are the bids we received for the latest bond sale of just over $30 million. Uh, we had a total of 13 bids, uh, very competitive. And UBS Financial was the low bidder at a, a total interest cost of, uh, just over 3.7%, which we were very pleased with. Uh, this is a comparison of what the, uh, previous version of the, the debt model had, uh, as far as calculations for the impact of that last bond sale on our debt capacity and, uh, uh, available funding in the future. So, uh, they tend to model this conservatively with the interest rates. So they had plugged in a 5% interest rate for the bonds. And, uh, as you just saw, we came in better than that at 3.7. So, um, we are well within what we had planned, uh, for debt service for those bonds. So that all that turned out very favorably. And this is a, a page you're probably, uh, familiar with that just shows, uh, the debt that we have, um, already incurred or having the pipeline, uh, the revenue that's available to pay off, uh, the payments on that debt. And then what our, uh, reserves look like as we, uh, build reserves through our debt service fund for future, uh, capital projects and debt needs. If you'll recall, um, last year we, um, reimagined our, our plan and the method that we use to set aside money for future debt and capital. Uh, we took what had been the revenue savings plan and refreshed that and rebranded that as the debt service fund. And so when we did that process and we were looking for, uh, a different methodology to, um, accrue funds for future debt and capital, we took what the, the previous plan showed as, as what we would accrue over the next, you know, 25 to 30 years. And we sort of solved for a methodology that would, would bring us to the same place in the future. Uh, we didn't want to negatively impact, um, you know, the trajectory we were on with the, the previous revenue savings plan. So, um, at that point in time, in the year 2047, we were solving to, uh, have a reserve amount of about 148 million. And after the, the latest bond sale and the updates that Davenport's plugged in, I think we're at about 161 million in, in 2047 for, for the, uh, the fund, uh, balance at that point. So obviously we know we're going to incur additional debt in the future with, with capital improvement needs. So, uh, we know, you know, it's unlikely we would ever have a fund balance that high in the future, but it shows us what our capacity is and what our, um, ability is to fund those future needs.
Can I ask a question about that page?
Yes.
On the right column, you have the, uh, the deficit, uh, annual surplus deficit. And the, in 2028, we had the deficit, but that was with the 5% interest rate. Is that correct?
No, this is updated.
This is what? This is updated?
This is updated with the actual numbers.
Okay. So in 2028, I'm assuming that's going to be the last bond sales or the year before will be the last bond sale. I'm just trying, I'm looking at the debt, the deficit. I'm just making the assumption the bond sale was either the year before.
Yeah, that's correct. The final bond sale will be in 27. And so that, that deficit number just means we have money to cover that, but we have to draw from our reserve instead of putting more into the reserve than we're taking out for debt.
Okay.
That one year, we do have to draw on the reserves.
I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Yes.
I have a, a question slash comment. And, you know, we really shouldn't pass 2029 or 2030 on this document, right? In the sense that what we're about to cover in the CIP is 2026 to 2030. And when I, my calculation of about $80 million worth of other projects that are in that time horizon. So we shouldn't be looking at this affordability analysis past where we've already sort of penciled in these other capital needs. Cause yeah, we'll never, we'll never hit a hundred million dollars because we've got to take out other financing. And that gets a little concerning too, when even looking at 2030, 2032, 2033, um, we're around 2031, that gap. The other analysis we need with this is how much debt can we take on? After 2030, with the gap that's there between the requirement on the old bonds and the revenue from the other. So you've got a gap of a million. How much can we finance? Right? Cause as we get into the rest of CIP, we got projects that aren't accounted for in even the window that they were supposed to be in before. So as we move forward on this analysis, we're going to do a CIP. Let's look 10 years ahead, five, 10, 15 years ahead. Five years is not enough for a capital improvement plan. And then sort of throw it back into a really good model we have. That's sort of the piece that's missing for me is figuring out how much, what our debt capacity actually is. I mean, I could figure it out, but it'd be nice to sort of see that as another chart. Like how much this million represents at a certain interest rate? So we can see, oh, okay, we're going to have enough to pay enough capacity to borrow 50, 80 million dollars in 2032. That's kind of, because we'll need to. Um, so that's just a recommendation to try to visualize that future, um, debt capacity that way.
Yeah. And that's a good point. And, and we're planning to do that. That's sort of the next, um, iteration of the next charge we're going to give to Davenport is to look at what we have in the CIP, look at future needs and model some of that out for us as far as what our capacity could be to fund that. Because, you know, some of those items in the CIP, you know, obviously we haven't determined what the funding would be for that. So does that need to be packaged as a bond sale? Can we do, you know, separate borrowings for things? So we do plan to take a look at that as, as we continue, um, revising the model now that we've had the, the latest bond sale.
Sounds great.
And then, uh, finally just wanted to, uh, quickly show you, um, the, the remaining balance for the GO bonds. Of course it was a $69 million bond referendum. We've had two of the three planned bond sales. We did, uh, take advantage of the two thirds bond capacity and that opportunity. So that, uh, preserves some future, uh, debt capacity that council could elect to take on if they wanted to. Um, that, that can be determined in the future, but, um, the, the final bond sale will be in 2027. It's, you know, probably going to be between 17 and 20 million dollars depending on the, the two thirds bond capacity that, that could or could not be utilized. So just wanted to refresh everybody on, on kind of where we stand and how much money we have remaining, uh, to be sold in each of the, uh, four buckets from the referendum.
I will hand it back over to Sarah.
Okay. Uh, just a reminder of our CIP development schedule. So in the summer and into the early part of the fall, um, we continue to do some work on our visioning and reimagination of our CIP process. We start meeting as a steering committee for upcoming decision-making in the fall. In December, we do our budget and CIP kickoff with the February, January timeframe is when, uh, CIP requests are due. Uh, here we are at our April work session to talk about the CIP. In May, we then propose the budget, which includes the CIP. And then in June, we adopt the budget, which includes the CIP. When CIP, uh, started meeting this fall, we wanted to spend some time doing, um, some visioning and goal setting for what we wanted the CIP to look like in not just the near future, but in the long term. And as we started thinking about what projects were down the pipeline and how the town was growing and what the needs were, how did we want to make sure that the work that we did was in alignment with, um, priorities and funding opportunities? So we came up with a vision statement of strategically aligned capital priorities and funding to create and sustain Garner as a thriving community, which we think really synergizes, um, the work that we do at the staff level, but also the work that we bring to council to help direct what is happening throughout the town from a capital improvement standpoint. We, uh, then wanted to think about our goal setting in a cyclical cycle, um, of planning for projects, constructing or acquiring projects, and then maintaining those projects. Um, so that will be kind of the next iteration as funding becomes available is creating some goals that help us achieve that very simplistic cycle of, um, of capital improvement, of the capital improvement process. Some other things that we discussed as a team include thinking about the town character and aesthetics and how we engage the public in that process to make sure that we are meeting the demands of our residents. Thinking about equitable distribution of projects and project types. So making sure that we have improvement, we have road improvements all over the town. Um, we have park improvements or park projects all over the town. Um, and so there's just an equitable, equitable distribution of those, not only from a project type, but from a geographic standpoint. Connection and mobility and, and really the overall transportation, um, piece in Garner came up in the community survey. So we want to make sure that we're putting a focus there, um, as funding becomes available. And also thinking about our private partners, um, to help us leverage additional funding as we, as we look at big projects that need to get done. We also had an opportunity with the implementation of our new, uh, budget software to better organize, um, our capital. We call them elements and then various categories. And so there was a desire to call out public safety as its own category, especially with the consolidation of the fire department and understanding the needs of future public safety studies within not only fire, but also in police. And then also to think about vertical construction. So we've got a number of projects that are on the horizon, such as our public works center that we would label vertical construction. And then to think about in each category, how can we, uh, create, um, some space to identify funding for feasibility study and 20% design? Um, to get ahead of doing the pre-work so that when we do have funding opportunities, we truly have shovel-ready projects. So we moved from the four elements of general government, parks and stormwater and transportation to the ones on the, uh, right. Uh, general government became general public improvements. And so these are going to be the categories of projects that are really in the maintenance, um, and ongoing, um, recurring needs of the town. We kept parks, but we added public facilities and public safety, and then maintained our stormwater and transportation, uh, elements. And within each of these categories, we do have a subcategory that allows for us to call out planning funding, which would help us, um, categorize feasibility studies and 20% design. So looking at the next five years, um, we have, if you look, the pie chart is, looks a little different. Um, and I apologize about some of these stretching. I thought they had been fixed. But general public improvements is about 50% or is 50% of the total five-year plan. And really that is $25 million on ongoing maintenance for our vehicles, uh, public facilities, public safety technology, IT capital and public art. Um, which I'll talk a little bit about public art in a, in a moment. We also have, uh, transportation. So the next largest project that's going to be in that category is going to be Joan Sausage. And then we have a little bit of money left, um, for parks and transportation. So overall, our, our five-year CIP is only $50 million. For the upcoming 2630 CIP, the new project that's included in parks is a planning and design project for the Lake Benson boathouse. Um, so this will be, uh, some significant work on relocating the boathouse and doing some design on what that new facility will look like. Other projects include allocating money for a Meadowbrook update. This is going to update the current plan and design based upon new information. The current plan is a little dated and we've got quite a bit of new information on that site since the plan was originally developed. So we do think a good update is worth our time and, and dollars. But also looking at what some interim use and cost feasibility is going to be considering, um, some of the, uh, egress ingress. some of the egress-ingress issues are, as well as some of the issues that we've been dealing with at the dam. We're continuing to fund our penny for parks at just under a million dollars. This will help our Public Works and Parks Departments continue to replace picnic benches, other benches throughout the park system, replacing scoreboards at various athletic fields, continuing to update and replace signage throughout the parks, looking at a permanent solution for the Veterans Memorial Pathway that will help address the needs of both bicyclists and pedestrians, and also replace the playground equipment at Greenbrier Park. For transportation, one of the new things that we were able to do is allocate $100,000 annually towards traffic calming efforts. This is going to be $100,000 annually that will roll from year to year. And it will allow us to continue to do current traffic calming measures such as speed tables without eating up some of our pavement preservation and resurfacing budget. But it will also allow us to accumulate some funding that will help us look at other opportunities. So you can see here, this is a picture from the city of Raleigh. You can see some of the traffic calming efforts that they have on this road where you have, they have names for these that I'm not going to remember, but the jut-outs and medians that help slow traffic in high-impact areas. So this is something really exciting. This is also really, we're thinking about an opportunity for some stormwater and/or public art opportunities to come together with these projects. On our general public improvements, we continue to cover ongoing replacement and maintenance with our VERT, our Vehicle Equipment and Repair Program, PERFORM, IT Capital, and our body-worn cameras for police, as well as continued public safety technology upgrades. Police has done a great job of exploring different kinds of innovative technology that they now have a little bit of money thanks to the half a penny for public safety technology to, to explore and continue to do good police work and try some innovative methods of doing that. On the new project side, we have moved public art into the CIP. What this does is, so this is funded at $50,000 annually. And it will allow, because it's in a multi-year fund, it will allow funding to continue to accumulate year over year. So if we have a year with some smaller projects, we can build up some funding for some much larger projects that may be more than $50,000. So to, to think about some Horizon items, let's, we've got our transportation projects continue to remain the same. We do have Joan Sausage Road South, as well as the Joan Sausage Road West Side, which was a portion of the current Joan Sausage project that was delayed due to current costs or on the horizon. Wilmington and Ackerman Road Extension Projects, as well as right-of-way land acquisition for future projects that we know continues to percolate. On our stormwater side, we have the Peacock Property Dam remediation that right now we are, have allocated funding for some study work and design work. But we don't yet know what the total project cost will be for that. So that is currently on our horizon. As well as stormwater infrastructure in the downtown area that will come about from the current downtown stormwater assessment. And then any major infrastructure repairs that are a result of the larger stormwater assessment. On parks, we have our Jürgen Park Phase Two, which is still on horizon. Looking at the Avery Street Rec. Center and Annex and the property there, future Greenway and Greenway Connections, as well as the Lake Benson Boathouse relocation. So after the study's done, what is the relocation and construction cost going to look like and how will we look to fund that moving forward? Public facilities, we continue to have Public Works and future Town Hall Campus Construction. And we've now, we've had Fire Station Two rebuild on there, but we're now looking at making this a public safety facility that would include a public, I'm sorry, a police space. I think the model at Catty Road has been really beneficial. And so we want to continue to look at how can we co-locate public safety departments in the future? And so we also have a future public safety facility, which would be Fire Station Six, a police substation, potentially a training center and EOC as well. And with that, what questions, comments do you have?
Thank you very much. That's a lot of information. And let's start at this end of the podium with Mr. Singleton for any other questions, comments he might have.
One specific comment. You wrote on the CIP, the FY2630 Capital Improvement Plan, that what's projected for stormwater is, is just $392,000. So that's what, yeah, thank you. Right there, just $392,000. And I know we're doing an assessment right now. And so is this part of the assessment? Is not any projects or what is this exactly?
This money is currently allocated towards spot repair. So all of the assessment projects have been spoken for as far as funding. This is the remaining balance that we've currently allocated to spot repair. Depending
Spot repair?
The spot repair.
Okay. Thanks for saying the spot repair. I didn't know exactly what you said the first two times. Okay, thank you. I was just wondering about that amount of money for that period of time. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mary.
Thank you. Mr. Mary.
Yes, on the Joan Sausage Road improvements, could you refresh us on what that involves and when it's going to happen?
I'm going to do my best, but I might have to lean on, might have to lean on John to help me a little bit. So this is going to be an improvement from the Amazon, just, just south of the Amazon entrance, all the way to the Garner Road intersection. It will be roadway improvements, curb and gutter, and sidewalks. However, the west side, it's not really the west side, John, it's, it is the west side of the road, will not have any improvements due to the right-of-way acquisition that would have been required under the initial phase.
And what's the timeframe?
So, John, do you have an update on the timeframe?
Looking at the update just a moment. It looks like that we currently have construction starting in the fall of 2027. So we're at 65% design currently. And construction to begin in fall of '27 and complete in fall of '29.
John, how long, what's the timeframe for utility relocation?
I don't have that broken out, Sarah, in front of me.
Because sometimes I've, I've uncovered that the utility relocation is almost, if not longer, than the actual construction phase.
Like, that's a good example of the white oak roundabout. That's what we're experiencing. Now the utility relocations have taken longer than the construction will.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Delinger, comments, questions?
Yeah, I know. My question's going to be, because I ask them every year. What is the definition of a Horizon item?
So what we are looking at as Horizon items are, and I think our, our team continues to kind of wrestle with that. The Horizon items identified on this page are items that have been identified as council priorities and/or staff priorities that will require future funding. We, there is a gray area on some things that we know need to happen, but don't have quite as much to grab onto to list it as a Horizon item. But we're still looking for ways to identify those as part of this process.
So I'm looking, we need to define what that is. And first of all, CIP needs to go out 10 years. You can't have a soft to the Horizon and then not have dollar figures. I'm looking back at my notes from the retreat. And I have, this is 2026, 2030. The retreat, I've got $6 million for Fire Station Two rebuild, approximately maybe 10 million for this unknown amount for this Fire Station Six. I just threw a number in there because it was supposed to be 15 to 20 million dollars. Public Works Facility, and that's 2030. Public Works Facility at the retreat was reported in 2028. No dollar amount, but let's guesstimate $30 million. Town Hall Campus Expansion, 2029, $20 million. That's $66 million. That is not here. And I'm saying, this is, again, I say it every year. And Joan Sausage Road, we just said, is 2027. There's no dollar amount. It's within the five years of our existing CIP. So my question is, if these other items are within this five-year CIP window, why are they aren't on this capital improvement plan?
Because they don't yet have any identified funding source.
So why don't we have, this is, this Horizon items need to have dates, low cost, high cost, so that somebody can come in and plug in these numbers if they want to. And I want to. I mean, I already did it. But it paints it a very, and I don't see Meadowbrook on, on Horizon items. I don't see any funding from Meadowbrook in here.
So Meadowbrook is currently programmed in the current CIP with bond funds.
The whole thing?
We don't have a total cost estimate yet, but there are dollars allocated.
I don't, but it's not here. So there's not a complete picture of our CIP. It's $50 million. Again, you've got to guesstimate some of this stuff because it's painting a false impression of what our capital needs are. We know we're doing the Public Works Facility. We know we're doing the Fire Station. It's not $10. It's not a billion dollars. It's somewhere between six and 10 or 12. Get a high and low. So we can say capital improvement plan is between 100, is between 80 million and 120 million dollars over the next five years. To not have those numbers on here, it's very difficult to make informed decisions on how are we going to be investing this year's budget? What do we need to do, not need to do? And then again, it goes back to the debt model in the future. Do we need to be more aggressive in some way or another to get some of this stuff funded? It's kicking the can down the road to 2027, 2028. All of a sudden figure out, where's the money for Joan Sausage Road coming from? Where's the money for the Public Works Facility coming from? Those are legitimate questions to ask. But we can't ask them if we don't have the numbers in front of us and can't engage in the dialogue. Or we'll be sitting here next budget season with the same thing. Looks rosy, looks pretty good. It's still hard to put numbers on those projects.
And, and we can, I just point a clarification. The items that are included in the CIP are funded. They're either funded through bond dollars, cash funding, grant funds, or a combination. The ones that are on horizon are, do not have an identified funding source. So we can certainly go back and make some changes on how we represent that. But we have, we have elected not to include projects without funding in the CIP for adoption because there's no revenue to support them.
But if I, if council asks a question, in the next five years on the horizon, what's the minimum amount we would need to pursue these projects? There should be an answer. What's the high and what's the low? The, the facilities, the camp, the expansion's happening, right? We're, we're going to build out over here to put more staff members right over across the thing. That is not a, maybe we will, maybe we won't. It's, it's a, we're going to. We have to identify the money. But in order to start thinking about identifying the money, we have to know the full universe so we can prioritize. Just put some numbers, just put some dollar figures on there. So it, it adds more context. You can say Horizon Items Unfunded, No Funding Source. That's fine. But put some dollar figures in a capital improvement plan.
Mr. Delinger, if I could, could add to that, we can certainly do that. I think also one of the things that Sarah had mentioned was for some of these Horizon projects, what makes it challenging even to give estimates of these projects if we don't really have design work done? And so being able to have dollars set aside to be able to do some initial work on some of these projects are really going to help us refine at least a range of what some of these projects could cost. So as we're looking at future needs, when we're talking with our financial advisors about future borrowing capacity, we have at least a range from what we know today, what would be our needs. And so I think we can, we can answer your question to provide more context. But I think there's also, as we think about our CIP budgeting process, there are some steps that we can, we can take that'll make that process easier as we not only talk about what does FY26 look like, but what does FY30 and FY35 look like? And what is that modeling to be able to help council make informed decisions?
And I'd just say, if we're, if we're talking about it, we have some idea of how much it's going to cost. Public Works Facility, 20 million to 50 million, 20 to 60. There's, there's a range that you can consolidate all these numbers to get a maximum minimum and a maximum maximum. We all can understand this is not exact science, but to have nothing is, there's no information there.
Well, there, there's more information in, in your budget book on the CIP projects themselves. But to your point, having the context of what is our best estimate at this point of what a project would, would cost, we certainly could include that, knowing it's, it's a point of time information that's provided. And there's, there's not a whole lot of, of support or data that we have in order to, for some of the projects to be able to say with that is practical in terms of range.
Well, and if we do have it, we, we should put it in here. We, there was a number given for Fire Station Two rebuild, 14 million and the breakdown for EMS and wake share was, there was a breakdown, sort of a rough estimate given. Best guess, asterisk best guess, could be higher off, plus or minus 30%. So just more information would be helpful.
Hey, thank you. Excellent question. Mr. Vance, no questions. Okay. This is a lot of information. It's extremely important. If we have another question or comment, I'd like to.
Just, just to follow, I'm looking right above the CIP program. Say, where David entered talking about the bonds. And I'm just curious on the, on the part of Joan Sausage Road that we've committed to, there's 7.9 million left in the streets and sidewalk bonds to be sold in the 2027 sale. So has any of the funding for Joan Sausage, has some of those bonds already been sold? A portion of them? Is that 7.9% of that or what?
So a portion of that project, the bonds have been sold. So I believe it's design and some utility relocation. The funding for construction is programmed into FY27, I believe. And that is bond-funded and LAP grant-funded.
Okay.
So there are a number of projects that Meadowbrook, Joan Sausage, there's some future Greenway money that's out there, that there's some, there's some money that's set aside and allocated towards those things that we didn't speak to, but they've been on the plan consistently for the last four years.
So it explains the 7.9 being left in streets and sidewalks. But under the CIP, that explains the $18.2 million, which would include some of our money, but also some of the LAP funding.
Correct.
Which is already, already
It's spoken.
Already funded. The funding is already designated. We'll say that. Okay, all right. Thank you.
On the Joan Sausage, so it's included in the 18 million. But which part of Joan Sausage is that?
It's the current Joan Sausage, we call it North Project.
I think we call it North because it's north of Garner Road.
Which one?
It's the, it's the project from Amazon to Garner Road, just it, we had to take out the west side because of the impacts. So that project.
So you call it North.
It's, it's the segment north of Garner Road.
Well, we are looking at improvements at that intersection, right?
Yes, and it's the whole, it's the intersection improvement. So it's the north because in our old language, the south was from Garner Road down towards 70. So it's, it's not exactly the best descriptor maybe, but it's that section just minus the west-hand side. So in Sarah's Horizon, you're only seeing the west side of that and then the future segments that might be further down. But in the CIP, the, the current project we're working on that I just gave Mr. Berenger the dates on is fully funded.
So what's the south?
What's, what's? South is from Garner Road down to Highway 70. That would be the, include the rail crossing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But because we're setting the intersection for that now, we're sort of investing toward that. So we keep it in our CIP because if a funding partner came along, we need to show it in our CIP to show it as an active project.
Yep, yep, yep.
And I would say too, likewise with the Town Hall Expansion. So the project for the Annex is currently funded. So any, we are looking at future facilities for Town Hall and then the potential expansion of this building that was originally programmed when it was built is also on a Horizon item.
Excellent. A lot of great information. And just like in, in the previous presentation about rebranding, the door is always open for, from any staff member. I've never had any staff member tell me, no, I can't tell you that. No, I don't have time. I would encourage every council member at any point, start with. Uh, I would encourage every council member, a, at any point, start with the town manager, work your way to the pieces of information, because you're asking excellent questions, and, and it's all about communication, don't miss an opportunity, you, you get a little one-on-one time with these folks. Uh, thank, thank you for all that you do, Mr. Beck, Ms. Warren, Celeste, thank all of you. This, this is a lot of stuff here, a lot of detail, your job never ends. Thank you. And that brings us to one of my other favorite topics. Uh, if you thought it was important and exciting about capital improvement and logo and remarketing, rebranding, how about junked and abandoned vehicles? Uh, no, nobody likes those, we all wanna cure it. Uh, it, is, our town attorney had launched her program to review, uh, existing ordinances and get them in compliance with current state regulations, current language. We realized that some things had barely been touched since approximately Civil War days, or at least Reconstruction days. And as we tried to decide which ones to address first, uh, I picked, I, I asked, could you start with the junked and abandoned vehicles? Because this is complicated, it is overdue, and if we can do this one, we can do any of them, plus we can picture it. So, thank you very much, Ms. Jones, for what you've done, and tell us about suggestions, things that we should be doing to, uh, get our ordinances in compliance and up to date.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so yes, the, the second in the code revision project has ended up being, uh, the junked and abandoned vehicles. And as council may, uh, remember, we did have a meeting with the inspections, uh, director talking about, and the, the planning director talking about, uh, the town's current efforts to deal with junked and abandoned vehicles. Uh, this is an area that we have state-enabling authority, but that state-enabling authority is, is somewhat restrictive, uh, because this basically authorizes the towing of vehicles from public streets, public property, as well as private property, as long as we meet the parameters of this state, uh, statute. So, uh, basically, um, a junked vehicle is a vehicle under state law, as well as in our ordinance, um, one that does not have a current license plate and is one of the following. So, it has to be partially dismantled or wrecked, uh, cannot be self-propelled or moved in the manner in which it was intended to move. And then, our current ordinance says is more than five years old and appears to be, um, less than one hundred dollars. Uh, state law gives us an option of either five hundred dollars or one hundred dollars. Uh, this is an ordinance that hasn't been updated in a number of years, and there's probably not any type of vehicle out there that doesn't have a junk scrap metal value of at least a hundred dollars. Um, so, the proposed update would raise that threshold to the five hundred dollars. That's probably the category that's least used, because again, um, most vehicles have, um, a worth greater than five hundred dollars. One of the other, um, kind of substantive changes has to do with enforcement and our pre-tow notice. It's also updating this ordinance. When it was adopted, there was a community development department in the town, we don't have that department anymore. Um, so, we're going with the state, um, statute reference that would be a duly authorized official. And so, because some of the junked and abandoned vehicle, um, authority goes to dealing with, uh, our public streets, that would be the, the chief of police and, um, the chief's designee, or the town manager and the town manager's designee. Again, currently, um, this function, for the most part, is housed in the inspections Department with the code compliance officers. And then, um, with having it as the police chief or the town manager or designee, it allows for flexibility should there be, uh, a reorganization of either town departments or roles and responsibilities of specific staff members in the future. So, under state law, there has to be the opportunity for a pre-tow appeal and a post-tow appeal. So, the pre-tow appeal is you get stickered, or you get that notice, uh, that your vehicle is junked or abandoned and has to be removed. Uh, our existing ordinance has the hearing before the Board of Adjustment at its next regular meeting. Um, the, the Board of Adjustment, although planned to meet monthly, rarely, uh, meets monthly, so there, um, could be some delay. The proposal, um, as you saw with the nuisance ordinance, is to, uh, put this appeal in the town manager's office, uh, and that allows for appeals to be done, um, in a more timely manner than convening, um, a board that would require public notice. Um, so it would, um, help those, um, residents, uh, who might, um, want to appeal this. Um, I've been told that we have not had any pre-tow appeals in quite some time, maybe, maybe not ever. Uh, most often, people would do a post-tow appeal to try to reclaim their vehicle, and those actually go to the magistrate for the, through the court system. And then again, uh, this is an ordinance that said that violations, um, shall subject civil penalties. Changing this to may gives some discretion, uh, to assess the penalties and encourage cooperation. Again, most of the code compliance efforts are to bring properties and people into compliance with our code and not, uh, necessarily to be punitive, um, as well as, um, if we do have punitive-type, uh, civil penalties or fines that we collect, uh, they actually, under the state constitution, have to be turned over to, uh, the Board of Education. That is, um, the end of the slide presentation. If you want, I can, um, walk through some more of the, the specific changes, but for the most part, those changes are to either more closely parallel the state-enabling statute, uh, and then make some consistency with, um, terminology that's used within that ordinance.
Thank you very much, Attorney Jones, you and your team have, have done a, a, quite a bit of work to go through all of this fine print and get it cleaned up. Uh, the question before council tonight, there, there will not be an official vote, but just, uh, do we feel like we're ready to put this on the calendar, this particular set of amendments, for a public hearing, and then go through the process? Okay, I'm getting a thumbs up over here, put, put it on the schedule, uh, let's put it on the schedule.
All right, so, um, the earliest we would probably do this, uh, would be the May twentieth meeting, but it, it could be moved to June if, if council, um, you know, wanted more time. But I just wanted to give another highlight to, under the government tab on the webpage, we do have, um, the code ordinance revision project page and updates. For instance, the, um, nuisance ordinance that was recently adopted by council is now on there, and then the proposal. And, um, I'm happy to report that this is generating some interest and not overwhelming interest, but it does give, um, an opportunity for residents to, to provide some comments. The one comment that we have received so far on the junk and abandoned vehicles is, um, frustration, uh, from someone who's, happens to be their HOA, you know, on their HOA board and dealing with their neighborhood and, and vehicles that are in the neighborhood. So, again, staff can reach out to that individual and, and see what the, if there are specific issues in that particular neighborhood that could be addressed under this ordinance.
Can I follow up on that? That's a good question. So, Ms. Jones, if the HOA, which is oversees all of that, so can the town do something with junk vehicles to supersede them? Or is there, is the HOA have the final say in what can or cannot apply to a junk vehicle as defined here?
So, um, state law allows the town to do, to do things about junked and abandoned vehicles. HOAs with, in, with their covenants, they can be more restrictive. For instance, you know, about where you can park, uh, whether you need to cover certain vehicles. Um, so, uh, I think what happens is some, they would rather the town enforce these than them having to privately enforce their covenants. But nothing in, um, either the state-enabling law or our ordinance would prevent an HOA from being more restrictive in their particular neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Like, like in most applications, HOAs can be more restrictive than the town, because everyone, when they buy that property there, they agree to those covenants when they purchase that property. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good, good point. Uh, yeah, this is an interesting topic, it's a complex topic, it's a very visible topic, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to maybe do a ride-along between now and May twentieth with one of our enforcement officers, just to point out what we have done, what we can do, and what's outside of the scope that we just have to learn to get along with. And, and, and the guys on the enforcement team have done a great job of working with the property owners to understand their situation and not just start towing cars out. They, they've really been human beings and neighbors, and, and your, your citizens appreciate that. So, I look forward to getting a ride-along, I've, I've been promised a ride-along by the town manager. So, we'll, we'll get that set up between now and...
Can, can you get him a body camera so he can work while he's doing it, so maybe he's gonna watch it?
Oop, oop, now we're talking.
We can get him a GoPro.
There you go, yeah, then we'll, we'll, we'll do a live broadcast while we're doing it, or you can watch the recorded version, so you can, you know, fast forward through your commercials. That'll be good. Uh, great, with that being said, we got a thumbs up, mission accomplished for you, Ms. Jones?
Yes, um, first I'd like to, you know, thank, um, Mr. Driver and Mr. Quello for, for being present and, and helping with, um, with these ordinance amendments. Uh, and then, I guess my understanding is there's consensus to go forward with the May twentieth public hearing.
Yes, excellent, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And our agenda says the next item coming up is manager reports, uh, including the pending agenda.
Yes, Mayor, so, uh, before you this evening in your agenda packet is just a preview of your May meetings. So, looking ahead to your May sixth regular meeting, we've got several presentations, including a Building Safety Month recognition and Law Enforcement Week recognition. Also, on May se- six, I'll be presenting to you for your consideration and to start our discussion on the FY twenty-six budget. Uh, you'll receive a copy of the recommended budget, hard copy, by the end of this week. In, in addition to the presentations on May sixth, we also have several items under consent, some, uh, budget amendments for new, some equipment uses and grants. Um, also, resolution allowing us to sole-source a particular, um, with, with a particular vendor, and then a voluntary annexation for Waterfield Ridge Place. We've got two public hearings, Garner Six Industrial and Clifford Road, and at this point, we do not have any, um, reports or old new business. Uh, just a reminder, um, in May, we will have our budget work session, that'll be the afternoon of May fifteenth. We will be upstairs in the training room. So, it'll be an opportunity for council to really get a broader and more detailed overview of the FY twenty-six budget and be able to, to review it, ask questions, and give guidance. Looking ahead to your regular meeting on May twentieth, we've got a few presentations, including Public Works Week, an introduction of Ms. Garner, uh, one item for the Parker Pearl Street Improvement Bid. And then, on May twentieth will be, uh, your official required public, uh, budget public hearing. And then, as you just mentioned, potentially tentative, a public hearing on the proposed amendments to, uh, the ordinance, uh, that focus on junk and abandoned vehicles. Under, uh, new old business, uh, we've got some items on fifty-eight twenty-eight for Fayetteville Road, and then also, we're coming back to you based on your guidance and feedback during your February retreat, official approval and adoption of definitions and terms as recommended by the Affordable Housing Task Force. And then we'll have our monthly talk of the town report. Uh, we'll finish up May with our work session on the twenty-seventh of May, presentation by Wake Transit Plan. Also, this will be another opportunity for council to discuss the budget, for, for staff to provide any updates , uh, based on, uh, information we received between now and after the budget work session itself, but also any updates that council requests in terms of the, the budget for FY twenty-six. And then also, uh, there was a request to, to bring back to council some further discussion and review of the R eight zoning. So, we're, we're gonna pencil that in for our discussion on the twenty-seventh as well. So, that gives you an overview, um, of what we've tentatively scheduled for your May meetings, and happy to answer any questions council has.
Excellent, thank you very much, any questions for our town manager on those top, those items? Okay.
Uh, just one more thing I'd like to, um, share with council, and I believe, John, you're gonna bring it up? So, uh, we have such a talented staff here that now we've been able to present Garner Open Data Portal. Uh, this is gonna replace the maps and GIS section on our, uh, website, but it provides an opportunity to share publicly all the information we have regarding development within our community. And so, um, this is another step towards our commitment to transparency and information sharing. Alex Bone on our planning staff has done an amazing job to sort of put this all together in an open portal, um, type of a format. We encourage you to take a look at it, if you've got any feedback, suggestions, we'd love to hear that, but also wanna share it with the community as a great place to get information all about the town of Garner. So, that's all I have for manager reports this evening, Mayor. Happy to answer any additional questions that you and the council may have.
Okay, excellent. More communication, more transparency, more access to data, that's always helpful. Uh, you've given us our homework assignment, I think, for now. Uh, let's move along to attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I just wanna remind those that are attending the City Vision Conference in Greenville, um, tomorrow, um, through Friday morning, that the town will be receiving the Commit to Civility Award at tomorrow's luncheon, um, that's given by the League of Municipalities. And again, just a reminder that Garner was the first jurisdiction to complete this program, um, in the entire state of North Carolina. So, there will be nice recognition tomorrow of the town.
Excellent, and, and on that note, let me recognize all of the town council members who have been through this whole process over, what, it wasn't six or eight months that we've been talking about it and working on the thing. Uh, and I think it shows, uh, we, we handled several very sensitive, uh, issues this evening that people are very passionate about, and everybody was very professional, cooperative, and above all, civil. So, thank you, thank you for taking that to heart and helping us get through some of these very difficult discussions. Thanks for putting us on that track.
And then my, um, other update is, um, for the general assembly session, uh, the crossover date is May eighth. Um, so I will be giving you an update following that of potential bills. Um, as you know, there've been a, a, a number of bills related to planning and zoning and land use regulation. So, you'll have a, we'll have a better update as to whether any of those bills are actually moving forward. Um, so, look for that, um, after the eighth. And then I just wanted to publicly thank, um, Kayla Black, who's been our spring legal intern. Uh, she will be finishing up this Friday and graduating next week, and then moving on to employment in, in the Asheville area.
Thank, thank you for all you've done to keep your team together and continue to get the work done in spite of turnover and change. Thank you. Okay, with that, I believe that brings us to council reports, and we'll start back at Mr. Vance's end.
I have no report tonight.
Mr. Dellinger?
Yeah, just have a question for, on the Affordable Housing Task Force. We have a, we don't seem to have adopted a formal post-report timeline for things, and it seems we're moving kind of serially and not in parallel on some things. So, we have the scheduled meeting with the Triangle Community Coalition in first week of May, which was one of, uh, um, recommendations to engage, uh, out of the report. But I don't know that we have a timeline for the formation of, uh, or discussion of formation of a committee or commission. And I know that was one of the recommendations, and I'm kinda just thinking we need to come up with a timeline for the other housing work. Um, like I said, it's kind of coming in, in order, but some of these things can run in parallel. And it, it struck me as we're doing interviews for HR committee, that we got all these people who are interested in doing things, and it's like, oh, we have this other committee we may be forming, but haven't made the steps to do. And I know we also haven't decided on the orientation of that group with relation to the town. So, there, at some point, we need to have a conversation about what that's gonna look like. The other question I had, um, going back and looking at the best practices, one of them was, um, investing in staff was one of the, a staff, a position, let me be very specific, was one of the very explicit recommendations and best practices that came out of the work of the task force. out of the work of the task force really unanimously. And so my question for the budget that we are going to see at the end of this week, is there a housing position in that budget?
There is not a recommended position in next year's budget for for housing. Now, if that's something council wants to discuss and provide direction to staff in terms of your deliberations, certainly, we will listen and and take the direction from council. But the recommended budget reflects the conversations and the work and the guidance council provided at the retreat in terms of affordable housing initiatives.
Thank you.
So there is some work going on. Some things can be in series, some can can be parallel. Any particular details that anybody's got or any questions, see either one of our co-chairs on that, Mr. Vance or Ms. Miller. She'll be glad to fill you in. If we need to get a more formal presentation of the status at another council meeting, we can work toward that.
We can certainly look at your agendas and figure out what the best time is to do that.
Yes, exactly. And I noticed it is on one of these. And we'll see if we need to get an update even before that. Good questions, we won't. We've spent a lot of time and energy and a lot of people have, and we want to make sure we keep it moving. But we do it in an orderly fashion, make one informed decision after another, and not get ahead of ourselves. So but thanks for your attention and reminders on that. Any other items?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ms. Barringer.
Just some updates on the public art. The cross two crosswalks were painted on Main Street, well, Main Street and Pervis Street this past week, and that was actually the manager's brainchild. But it really is, it really is encouraging and exciting and cheerful. So appreciate that. We are proceeding with creating a utility cabinet wrap for the cabinet going into White Deer Park. I don't have a timeline for when that will be installed, but it is underway. And we're excited about that. The park benches for the property where the Wings of Hope sculpture has been installed are on the way. So lots of good things when it comes to public art.
Thank you very much. You know, you mentioned the crosswalks. Did you mention who did the actual painting?
I think it was a labor of love by our town, many of our town staff.
Yes, Ms. Barringer, that's correct. In the spirit of supporting public art and just looking for a fun, creative leadership opportunity, our department had spent a good good bit of time on Friday morning, working on painting those two crosswalks. We had a great time doing it, and I think they turned out really well. A special thank you to our friends at Graphic House. They are the ones who supported us in that effort and sort of prepared us to be able to go in and do the paint, even did some touch-ups for us when we needed it. But I think overall, we've gotten very positive feedback, not only from the community and downtown businesses, but also just the staff of what a good time they had spending that time together. So thank you for that recognition.
You say good time, but if your definition of of a good time is on your knees on asphalt bend over painting for four hours, then it was huge fun. Some of them had cushions to put their knees on, some sat down and worked this way. But I think Mr. Jones with Public Works, he had the most creative solution of laying down with his head propped up and painting on the side of the hill like this. He was really getting into his work. So anything to get the work done. He has a great team, and they they worked, they had fun, but they worked hard to do it. Thank you for that. Mr. Singleton.
Yes, I want to thank staff. I sent a text as I came in this night about the plants at the front of Town Hall. They look great. And of course, it's getting a little more warmer here. It'd be challenging to keep them looking good, but we can keep them looking good. Keep them well mulched and water when they need it. But anyway, the interest of Town Hall looks much better than it did a year, year and a half ago. Some annuals really do pick up pick up the color, and it looks nice. So I just want to pass that along again.
And the colors are so great, even our art director seems pleased with them. Do the colors look okay?
I'm very happy.
All right. That's a good sign. Well, that concludes the items that we have on the agenda tonight. There is no closed session for this evening. That being the case, I would be glad to hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Barringer and second by Mr. Vance. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no. Hearing none. It passes unanimously. Meeting is adjourned.